For tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening. As the hour is 6:20 PM, I will call the Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting to Order. And our first order of business this evening will be the Select Board will be recessing this meeting to go into a non-meeting downstairs in the workroom. We will be back at 7 o'clock PM. Thanks.
For this week's report. Swayze Parkway reopened to traffic. A recap of the Exeter Holiday Block Party. Exeter TV wins several more awards. We celebrate the holidays around town. And a look back at the year we've had here in town. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started.
Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you're new or returning to the channel, please like this video, subscribe, and hit the bell to get notified about new content. We've had a long year behind us, and we're looking forward to celebrating the final report of the year with you. For our first segment, the New Fields entrance of Swayze Parkway is officially open to vehicle traffic. We spoke with the Select Board Chair Nico Papa Constantis about what this means for Swayze Parkway has been a forever staple on the hearts of those within Exeter. Whether they are local or from far away, the park has added endless experiences over the years not found anywhere else. During the pandemic, times were different and things began to change, and that change brought itself to Swayze's feet.
So upon the governor's emergency order in the spring of 2020, the Select Board closed the Swayze Parkway to allow folks to social distance and exercise. Through the course of that year, people started generating emails and phone calls to the Select Board supportive of keeping the road closed. However, we also heard from folks that had mobility issues that wanted to have it reopened eventually. When the governor lifted the emergency order in June of 21, the Select Board no longer had the authority to keep it closed. However, we did have the authority to make it one way, which we did. Selectwoman Cowan offered a compromise as a warrant article to go on the March 22 ballot. And in the spirit of that compromise was to discontinue the road from Water Street to the gazebo while keeping the New Fields entrance to the gazebo open. This offered a temporary way to open up the New Fields entrance as the warrant article called for while providing folks with a way to turn around safely, provide parking spaces for those with mobility issues, and also keeping the Parkway discontinued from Water Street to the gazebo.
Plans moved quickly with a look for compromise in keeping the will of the people who enjoyed a carless swayzy while providing for those who could not enter the park so easily. While the intention was clear, progress was halted by several factors. Legal dilemmas in the sewer siphon project were major setbacks in beginning the process. But after some years' time, construction finally began on the New Fields side of As crews were hard at work day in and day out applying the new turnaround to the Parkway. Culminating on Friday, December 13th, the New Fields entrance to Swayze Parkway was finally open to motor vehicles. A quick drive inside allows you a smooth 15 mile per hour cruise, ending just before the gazebo with a perfectly sizable turnaround to 180 and either park on the side of the road or head back out. And best of all, the work done here has come with no impact to the town at all.
We were able to achieve this by using road aid that we had received from the state during the pandemic, as well as some ARPA funds for the gates that will be put up. So this came at no taxpayer dollars. What we've put together now is temporary. It could be permanent if folks like it. We continue to ask folks to reach out to us on ideas. Do you like it? Do you not like it? What else would you like to see? And I'd like to thank without Public Works, I mean particularly Director Cronin, Highway Superintendent Jay Perkins, and all of the Swayze Park trustees worked collaboratively, not only with the Select Board, but getting the input from folks in town. And just like any other project in town, the more we hear from folks, the better decision we can make to make this a better community and make everyone in the community as happy as we can.
The Exeter Holiday Block Party came and went on the 5th of December. We were there to show off some of the highlights from that night.
Holiday festivities are officially underway as the Town of Exeter had their annual Holiday Block Party made possible by the Chamber of Commerce and Parks and Rec. Hundreds of people gathered outside of Town Hall to celebrate. A gingerbread competition took place in the Congressional Church. Participants got creative and built all kinds of gingerbread houses, from a quaint gingerbread farm where animals could frolic, to a horrifying gingerbread tragedy where Godzilla attacked a town full of marshmallow people. Next door in the Town Hall, the 26th Annual Festival of Trees took place. The trees spread some holiday cheer for all those who came to see. This fundraising event managed to raise over $50,000 for the Community's Children's Fund. Through raffle ticket sales and a tree auction, the event was able to help hundreds of local children in need. The night was capped off when the big man himself made the trip all the way from the North Pole to Exeter. After singing a Christmas carol with the crowd, Santa flipped a switch and lit up the town with holiday cheer. Then Santa and Mrs. Claus took a selfie with the crowd and hopped back in their SUV drawn sleigh back to the North Pole. A huge thank you to all those who came out to celebrate the holidays. Hope to see everyone again next year.
Exeter TV was nominated for several awards by the Alliance for Community Media's Nor Easter Awards. I was lucky enough to be our representative to attend the ceremony, and I took you along the journey to see what went down. Mystic, Connecticut, home of the Mystic Aquarium, Old Mystic Village, and most importantly, the Hilton Mystic Hotel. My home this past weekend as I attended the Alliance for Community Media's Nor Easter Awards in conference, sponsored by the fact that Bob Glowacki is in Slovakia for the 30th time. I became Exeter's representative to attend the awards in the off chance one of our videos won an award. Stay tuned to find out if that came true. Upon arrival into my hotel room, I found it easy to settle down, take a long look in the mirror, and enjoy myself a nice drink before promptly playing eight hours of Super Smash Bros. Ultimate. The first day of the conference allowed me to get a sense of the hotel and see just how many attendees were present. The Alliance for Community Media, or ACIM for short, is representative of over 1,700 public, educational, and governmental access organizations and community media centers throughout the country. Cool. Well, everyone present were all representative of community stations all across the Northeast, from New York to, well Maine didn't have any reps, so I guess New Hampshire. I attended a plethora of presentations about a variety of topics, including social media metrics, outreach and marketing, franchising, negotiations, and the regulatory landscape, accessibility, captions, language access, and adaptive measures, and a familiar one with our friends from Merrimack TV, Community Storytelling as Journalism, presented by Nick LaValle and Grace Lemay. Yeah, I'm gonna go. Whom had given the presentation to the New Hampshire Coalition of Community Media just a few weeks back. See Bob's video over there. Enlightened and enthused, the day became night and it was time for the Nor Easter Awards. Entering into the crowded Mystic Theater, we were fed Mystic Pizza. Yes, Julia Roberts movie.
And this pizza is, how shall I say this? In a word, superb.
Shuffling into the theater, I took a seat with Merrimack TV, so I wasn't so lonely, and eagerly anticipated seeing Exeter TV up on the big screen. The police and fire substation was our hot ticket item, a labor of love from both Bob's directing standpoint and my own filmmaking prowess.
In the first place, proposed new police station and fire substation, Gabe Perez and Bob Glowacki. Exeter TV, an angel.
We did it. Can you hear the way the crowd blew up in applause? They were screaming my name. Accepting the award for all the work Bob and I put into our video, and now we have this super sick plaque to commemorate that hard work. Hey, new guy Dan. Hold this for me. Meeting Minute also won second place in its own category, but Will Tapley doesn't work here anymore, so I can't celebrate with him. As the night came to a close, I went to bed knowing that this was a good year to be an Exeter TV. And by the time morning came around, I took a little detour to the aquarium. Yes, it was across the street, met some sea lions and beluga whales, and headed home to celebrate our win as a station with a harp. And Bob got to stay in the cold with that baby of his.
Thune Elections 2023 Council A Large Forum with Thune Community Staff and Volunteers.
The holidays are officially here. Let's see if folks from around town can help us celebrate this wonderful season.
Recording? Hi, Exeter. So we just wandered around the town to go and spread holiday cheers to those at different businesses, at different locations, town departments. And the entire time that we were doing that, we had the mic muted every single time. So I kind of just wanted to put a little presentation out in front showing that a lot of people around town were happy to spread holiday cheer and give us their own special little messages. We're talking to people from the library, from the police station, Parks and Rec, Chamber of Commerce, and even Dan Chartrand at the Water Street Bookstore. We're all happily willing to give their love and holiday cheer out to the rest of the town. That being said, we will not be able to air those because all of them are completely silent. One person we do have as a representation and somebody with a very important message is Nico Papa Constantis, who will now speak.
Hi, I'd just like to send a brief holiday message to everybody that lives in this wonderful community here at Exeter, and also to all of our volunteers that work so hard on our boards and committees, and also all of our employees that help make this town run. I want to wish everybody a happy and merry holiday season, and most importantly, may we all enjoy a happy, healthy, and peaceful 2025.
Thank you for a good year here at Exeter TV. I know I've had a wonderful year here, and I hope to keep coming back to this job that I love very, very much. I want to give a shout out to my supervisor, Bob Glowacki, who's away right now. If it wasn't for him, this operation would not be as smooth and steady as it is. And I just want to say, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and whatever you celebrate, and we will happily see you guys in the new year. Thank you so much for your understanding.
For our last segment, we take a look back at the year we had here at Exeter TV and you as members of our community have gotten to see with us.
For Exeter TV, I'm Bob Glowacki.
I'm Gabe Perez.
I'm Will Tapley.
Nothing but grass and remnants of a structure torn asunder by a roaring fire in June of 1990, where it has remained dormant ever since.
It's time for the presidential primary and town elections are right around the corner.
Stephen discussed the challenges he's faced so far, including the recent flooding around the Squamstot River.
New to this year's election were brand new pole booths purchased during the summer.
The public comment period will extend for 30 days.
Doing it all the way stopped like this, we're able to cut the intersection down in size.
The event is an opportunity for residents to learn more about the proposed new police station. With the windows completed, the mason started the cosmetic repair to the brick face of the Ioka.
But there's another lesser known species of fish that is struggling to survive in our waterways.
Exeter experienced a partial solar eclipse earlier this week.
After nearly 42 years as a dedicated member of the fire service, almost 20 of which were in Exeter, Fire Chief Eric Wilking retired this past Friday.
After 9:00 PM on April 15th, Public Works crews were hard at work beginning the task of water main flushing. 149 river herring were hand tossed up over the Pickpocket Dam into the Exeter River on their way upstream.
Installation of the largest municipal solar ray in the state is underway at the Town Transfer Station. When finished, it will have 224 units, split between two buildings ranging over a 50,000 square foot total.
The second of two sewer siphon pipes was successfully pulled under the river on Friday, June 7.
Even landing himself on the NHIAA Hall of Fame, Bill Ball began humbly as an assistant coach.
Gabe Perez met up with longtime Public Works employee Jay Perkins as he reflects on his time in Exeter.
Site plan review, including three four-story buildings off of Portsmouth Ave, was discussed at the Planning Board's July 11th meeting.
Jumping to 2020, the Ioka had a new owner and plans for renovations were before local boards and committees for review, making the 900-mile journey from New Hampshire to the American Sign Museum in Cincinnati, Ohio, for the unveiling of the newly renovated Ioka marquee.
We've been getting mysterious reports of robots roaming parks across Exeter.
Towards the door and began to crack it open, and that's when I saw what had caused the noise.
Hello, I'm Pam Jettum.
Multiple cases of triple E have been reported in surrounding towns around Exeter, putting the town at moderate risk. The town's new voting booths and poll pads at the check-in area, lines move smoothly and efficiently thanks to the town's army of volunteers. Bob, what are you doing over here?
Hey, Gabe, how's it going?
Is that a little baby? Are you a dad now?
I'm a dad now. See, I love working for the town and all the great people I've met, but truly I will miss working with Bob and Gabe.
Are supportive of the reconfiguration of the bandstand?
To unveil a historic marker dedicated to the Black veterans of the American Revolutionary War.
Sam came out and he looked like a knight in shining armor.
Members of B-Shift worked alongside numerous mutually companies late into the evening on Monday night.
The Exeter Blue Hawk varsity soccer team went undefeated this year. And as you can see, a lot has changed since our last update in March. Let's take a look. That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe.
To help us spread the word.
For Exeter TV, I'm Bob Glowacki.
I'm Gabe Perez.
I'm Will Tapley, and this-
has been the Exeter Biweekly Report.
That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word. Head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. That's a wrap on the Biweekly Report for 2024. It's been a great year for us here at the station. Bob became a dad, I became full-time, and we have new guy Dan. Say hi, Dan. We'll be taking a break from our regularly scheduled programming starting in the new year to give us some time to enjoy the holidays. We'll be back January 17th with all your local coverage, but bigger and better than ever. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a good weekend, Exeter. For this week's report. Swayze Parkway reopened to traffic. A recap of the Exeter Holiday Block Party. Exeter TV wins several more awards. We celebrate the holidays around town. And a look back at the year we've had here in town. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you're new or returning to the channel, please like this video, subscribe, and hit the bell to get notified about new content. We've had a long year behind us, and we're looking forward to celebrating the final report of the year with you. For our first segment, the New Fields entrance of Swayze Parkway is officially open to vehicle traffic. We spoke with the Select Board Chair Nico Papa Constantis about what this means for Swayze Parkway has been a forever staple on the hearts of those within Exeter. Whether they are local or from far away, the park has added endless experiences over the years not found anywhere else. During the pandemic, times were different and things began to change, and that change brought itself to Swayze's feet.
So upon the governor's emergency order in the spring of 2020, the Select Board closed the Swayze Parkway to allow folks to social distance and exercise. Through the course of that year, people started generating emails and phone calls to the Select Board supportive of keeping the road closed. However, we also heard from folks that had mobility issues that wanted to have it reopened eventually. When the governor lifted the emergency order in June of 21, the Select Board no longer had the authority to keep it closed. However, we did have the authority to make it one way, which we did. Selectwoman Cowan offered a compromise as a warrant article to go on the March 22 ballot. And in the spirit of that compromise was to discontinue the road from Water Street to the gazebo while keeping the New Fields entrance to the gazebo open. This offered a temporary way to open up the New Fields entrance as the warrant article called for while providing folks with a way to turn around safely, provide parking spaces for those with mobility issues, and also keeping the Parkway discontinued from Water Street to the gazebo.
Plans moved quickly with a look for compromise in keeping the will of the people who enjoyed a carless swayzy while providing for those who could not enter the park so easily. While the intention was clear, progress was halted by several factors. Legal dilemmas in the sewer siphon project were major setbacks in beginning the process. But after some years' time, construction finally began on the New Fields side of the As crews were hard at work day in and day out applying the new turnaround to the Parkway. Culminating on Friday, December 13th, the New Fields entrance to Swayze Parkway was finally open to motor vehicles. A quick drive inside allows you a smooth 15 mile per hour cruise, ending just before the gazebo with a perfectly sizable turnaround to 180 and either park on the side of the road or head back out. And best of all, the work done here has come with no impact to the town at all.
We were able to achieve this by using road aid that we had received from the state during the pandemic, as well as some ARPA funds for the gates that will be put up. So this came at no taxpayer dollars. What we've put together now is temporary. It could be permanent if folks like it. We continue to ask folks to reach out to us on ideas. Do you like it? Do you not like it? What else would you like to see? And I'd like to thank without Public Works, I mean particularly Director Cronin, Highway Superintendent Jay Perkins, and all of the Swayze Park trustees worked collaboratively, not only with the Select Board, but getting the input from folks in town. And just like any other project in town, the more we hear from folks, the better decision we can make to make this a better community and make everyone in the community as happy as we can.
The Exeter Holiday Block Party came and went on the 5th of December. We were there to show off some of the highlights from that night.
Holiday festivities are officially underway as the Town of Exeter had their annual Holiday Block Party made possible by the Chamber of Commerce and Parks and Rec. Hundreds of people gathered outside of Town Hall to celebrate. A gingerbread competition took place in the Congressional Church. Participants got creative and built all kinds of gingerbread houses, from a quaint gingerbread farm where animals could frolic, to a horrifying gingerbread tragedy where Godzilla attacked a town full of marshmallow people. Next door in the Town Hall, the 26th Annual Festival of Trees took place. The trees spread some holiday cheer for all those who came to see. This fundraising event managed to raise over $50,000 for the Community's Children's Fund. Through raffle ticket sales and a tree auction, the event was able to help hundreds of local children in need. The night was capped off when the big man himself made the trip all the way from the North Pole to Exeter. After singing a Christmas carol with the crowd, Santa flipped a switch and lit up the town with holiday cheer. Then Santa and Mrs. Claus took a selfie with the crowd and hopped back in their SUV drawn sleigh back to the North Pole. A huge thank you to all those who came out to celebrate the holidays. Hope to see everyone again next year.
Exeter TV was nominated for several awards by the Alliance for Community Media's Nor Easter Awards. I was lucky enough to be our representative to attend the ceremony, and I took you along the journey to see what went down. Mystic, Connecticut, home of the Mystic Aquarium, Old Mystic Village, and most importantly, the Hilton Mystic Hotel. My home this past weekend as I attended the Alliance for Community Media's Nor Easter Awards in conference, sponsored by the fact that Bob Glowacki is in Slovakia for the 30th I became Exeter's representative to attend the awards in the off chance one of our videos won an award. Stay tuned to find out if that came true. Upon arrival into my hotel room, I found it easy to settle down, take a long look in the mirror, and enjoy myself a nice drink before promptly playing- before promptly playing eight hours of Super Smash Bros. Ultimate. The first day of the conference allowed me to get a sense of the hotel and see just how many attendees were present. The Alliance for Community Media, or ACM for short, is representative of over 1,700 public, educational, and governmental access organizations and community media centers throughout the country. Cool. Well, everyone present were all representative of community stations all across the Northeast, from New York to, well, Maine didn't have any reps, so I guess New Hampshire. I attended a plethora of presentations about a variety of topics, including social media metrics, outreach and marketing, franchising, negotiations, and the regulatory landscape, accessibility, captions, language access, and adaptive measures, and a familiar one with our friends from Merrimack TV, Community Storytelling as Journalism, presented by Nick LaValle and Grace Lemay. Yeah, I'm gonna go. Whom had given the presentation to the New Hampshire Coalition of Community Media just a few weeks back? See Bob's video over there. Enlightened and enthused, the day became night, and it was time for the NorEaster Awards. Entering into the crowded Mystic Theater, we were fed Mystic Pizza, yes, the Julia Roberts movie.
And this pizza is, how shall I say this, been a word, superb.
Shuffling into the theater, I took a seat with Merrimack TV, so I wasn't so lonely, and eagerly anticipated seeing Exeter TV up on the big screen. The police and fire substation was our hot ticket item, a labor of love from both Bob's directing standpoint and my own filmmaking prowess.
In the first place, proposed new police station and fire substation, Gabe Perez and Bob Glowacki. Exeter TV, in the nation.
We did it. Can you hear the way the crowd blew up in applause? They were screaming my name, accepting the award for all the work Bob and I put into our video, and now we had this super sick plaque to commemorate that hard work. Hey, new guy Dan. Hold this for me. Meeting Minute also won second place in its own category, but Will Tapley doesn't work here anymore, so I can't celebrate with him. As the night came to a close, I went to bed knowing that this was a good year to be an Exeter TV. And by the time morning came around, I took a little detour to the aquarium. Yes, it was across the street, met some sea lions and beluga whales, and headed home to celebrate our win as a station with a harp. And Bob got to stay in the cold with that baby of his.
Booing elections 2023, council a large forum with booing community staff and volunteers.
The holidays are officially here. Let's see if folks from around town can help us celebrate this wonderful season. Recording?
Hi, Exeter. So we just wandered around the town to go and spread holiday cheers to those at different businesses, at different locations, town departments. And the entire time that we were doing that, we had the mic muted every single time. So I kind of just wanted to put a little presentation out in front showing that a lot of people around town were happy to spread holiday cheer and, you know, give us their own special little messages. We're talking the people from the library, from the police station, Parks and Rec, Chamber of Commerce, and even Dan Chartrand at the Water Street Bookstore. We're all happily willing to give their love and holiday cheer out to the rest of the town. That being said, we will not be able to air those because all of them are completely silent. One person we do have as a representation and somebody with a very important message is Nico Papa Constantis, who will now speak.
Hi, I'd just like to send a brief holiday message to everybody that lives in this wonderful community here at Exeter, and also to all of our volunteers that work so hard on our boards and committees, and also all of our employees that help make this town run. I want to wish everybody a happy and merry holiday season, and most importantly, may we all enjoy a happy, healthy, and peaceful 2025.
Thank you for a good year here at Exeter TV. I know I've had a wonderful year here, and I hope to keep coming back to this job that I love very, very much. I want to give a shout out to my supervisor, Bob Glowacki, who's away right now. If it wasn't for him, this operation would not be as smooth and steady as it is. And I just want to say, you know, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and whatever you celebrate, and we will happily see you guys in the new year. Thank you so much for your understanding. Done.
For our last segment, we take a look back at the year we had here at Exeter TV, and you as members of our community have gotten to see with us.
For Exeter TV, I'm Bob Glowacki.
I'm Gabe Perez.
I'm Will Tapley.
Nothing but grass and remnants of a structure torn asunder by a roaring fire in June of 1990, where it has remained dormant ever since.
It's time for the presidential primary, and town elections are right around the corner. Stephen discussed the challenges he's faced so far, including the recent flooding around the Squamstot River. New to this year's election were brand-new poll booths purchased during the summer. The public comment period will extend for 30 days.
Doing it all the way stopped like this, we're able to cut the intersection down in size.
The event is an opportunity for residents to learn more about the proposed new police station. With the windows completed, the mason started the cosmetic repair to the brick face of the Ioka.
But there's another lesser-known species of fish that is struggling to survive in our waterways. Exeter experienced a partial solar eclipse earlier this week.
After nearly 42 years as a dedicated member of the fire service, almost 20 of which were in Exeter, Fire Chief Eric Wilking retired this past Friday.
After 9:00 PM on April 15th, Public Works crews were hard at work beginning the task of water main flushing. 149 river herring were hand-tossed up over the pickpocket dam into the Exeter River on their way upstream.
Installation of the largest municipal solar array in the state is underway at the Town Transfer Station.
When finished, it will have 224 units, split between two buildings ranging over a 50,000-square-foot total.
The second of two sewer siphon pipes was successfully pulled under the river on Friday, June 7.
Even landing himself on the NHIAA Hall of Fame, Bill Ball began humbly as an assistant coach.
Gabe Perez met up with longtime Public Works employee Jay Perkins as he reflects on his time in Exeter.
Site plan review, including three four-story buildings off of Portsmouth Ave, was discussed at the planning board's July 11th meeting.
Jumping to 2020, the Ioka had a new owner, and plans for renovations were before local boards and committees for review, making the 900-mile journey from New Hampshire to the American Sign Museum in Cincinnati, Ohio, for the unveiling of the newly renovated Ioka Marquee.
We've been getting mysterious reports of robots roaming parks across Exeter.
Towards the door and began to crack it open. And that's when I saw what had caused the noise.
Hello, I'm Pam Jettum.
Multiple cases of triple E have been reported in surrounding towns around Exeter, putting the town at moderate risk. The town's new voting booths and poll pads at the check-in area, lines moved smoothly and efficiently thanks to the town's army of volunteers.
Bob, what are you doing over here?
Hey, Gabe, how's it going?
Is that a little baby? Are you a dad now?
I'm a dad now. See, I love working for the town and all the great people I've met, but truly I will miss working with Bob and Gabe.
Are supportive of the reconfiguration of the bandstand?
To unveil a historic marker dedicated to the Black veterans of the American Revolutionary War.
Sam came out and he looked like a knight in shining armor.
Members of B-Shift worked alongside numerous mutual aid companies late into the evening on Monday night. The Exeter Blue Hawk varsity soccer team went undefeated this year. And as you can see, a lot has changed since our last update in March. Let's take a look. That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe.
To help us spread the word.
For Exeter TV, I'm Bob Glowacki.
I'm Gabe Perez.
I'm Will Tapley, and this-
has been the Exeter Biweekly Report.
Have a good weekend, Exeter.
That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word. Head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. That's a wrap on the Biweekly Report for 2024. It's been a great year for us here at the station. Bob became a dad, I became full-time, and we have new guy Dan. Say hi, Dan! We'll be taking a break from our regularly scheduled programming, starting in the new year, to give us some time to enjoy the holidays. We'll be back January 17th with all your local coverage, but bigger and better than ever. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a good weekend, Exeter.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, welcome back. Good evening again, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance, and certainly those watching at home. This is the December 23rd, 2024, Town of Exeter- This is the December 23, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. And the board has been down in a non-meeting since 20 past 6:00. And then after that, we did a board interview. We are back for our regular business meeting. And I'd like to start by introducing the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartren, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And we have our town manager, Mr. Rustin, good evening.
Good evening.
And our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening, Joanna. And my name is Nico Papakosandis. We'll start off with public comment. It's an opportunity for members of the public to come forward with any comment. We do not have any members of the public currently in the room. And I will pause to see if we have anybody. On Zoom, we do not, so I will move on. First matter of business would be to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 9, 2024, and ask the board if there are any amendments or revisions.
I have none.
Okay, and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of December 9, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries 5-0. The board interviewed Sarah Coff downstairs for the last alternate position on the Sustainability Advisory Committee. It's a term to expire in April 2027. And I would ask for a motion to appoint Sarah Coff to that alternate position on the Sustainability Advisory Committee with a term to expire April 2027.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries 5-0, and we thank Sarah for her service and volunteering. I'm going to ask the board's indulgence. We have a, we had a late addition to our packet, and this was for a request for some relief on a tax, property tax bill. We typically do this under permits and approvals. But the petitioner is actually here. And out of respect for his time, I would like, ask the board if there's any objection to taking up this right now?
No.
Seeing none, Warren Gardner, I'd invite you to the microphone. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
And we have your letter, it was attached to the packet. But if you could give the board just a quick history, it'd be great.
So I basically explained, is, am I, does that work? Okay. I, it's basically what, what happened is what I explained in the letter. But essentially, my closing date was three days after the tax bills were, I guess, printed and sent out. So my tax, I found this out later by, I was able to get the first tax bill from, from the office downstairs. But I essentially never got a tax bill. It was addressed to the old owners, so I assumed that it got forwarded to their address. So I never saw it. At the closing, the, the title, the property title, people told me, look out for a bill in a month or two, and the town will send you a bill. So I was aware of that. On July 5, I, I was having some problems with my mail in June, and Exeter was holding my mail and things. So I was monitoring my mail with, whatever the thing is where you can see your mail online. And I saw that the tax office had sent me something on July 5. So I sent an email, I have that email here, on July 5, to the, it was the assessor's office, actually, and asked them, hey, I didn't get this mail. Is this something important? I'm expecting a tax bill. And I never got a response to that. But I followed up later, and eventually I was in here in July and talking to people because I found out about the assessment, which I also didn't know about. So then I forgot about my tax bill, and I was very worried about the assessment. But while I was in there, I also talked to the assessors, the company that's doing the assessing. And both the people downstairs and the company, I asked them, when should I receive my tax bill? And they all told me November. So I asked the wrong questions, I think, because they didn't know I had missed the last tax bill. But I thought, okay, I'm, I'm fine, I'm all paid. So, so I essentially, you know, it's, it's my responsibility to pay this tax bill. But I, I'm a new resident, and I had no idea what was going on, especially with the assessment. I was sort of confused by that. So when I got the bill in November, I saw the charge on there, and I said, what is this? And I called the office, and they said, oh, because you never paid the first tax bill.
Okay, all right. And so that total that you're looking for forgiveness is $309.79?
That's correct. And I have the, the tax bill.
Yeah, we have that as part of our packet, too. Thank you. Okay.
I think this has happened once before.
It has happened once before.
I know, it's frustrating, and I'm sorry.
I, I, I was wondering why the title company and the real estate people didn't give me a tax bill. When I, I paid taxes when I closed on the 10th.
But you pro-rated.
And it was already three days after the bills had gone out. So I was kind of surprised that it didn't happen.
Yeah, I think when you close, they only deal with your taxes up to the date of the closing. So, yeah, it was the pro rato, roche, or whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
When this came up the previous time, did you forgive the interest?
I think we did abate it, yeah.
Let's just do that.
Yeah, I think.
I'm happy to do that.
Yes.
Pretty straightforward, and I apologize if this happened.
Thank you. Do you want a motion?
It's a good way to get to know the town, the people who work in the town.
This is actually very interesting for me to see this.
Next time, we'll just send you an invitation. Truly, I'm very sorry that this, that this happened. But thank you for coming forward to us so that we could have this conversation with you. Before we move it, are there any other questions?
No, other than, it's just a timing issue. It wasn't a clerk's fault or anything. I just want to make sure we're, we're all clear on that. It really wasn't our tax department's fault.
No, no, I think it's a function of like, who gets the mail when.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Or assessing.
Assessing.
It wasn't assessing or collection.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chartren?
I'd make a motion to forgive the interest that was charged on the mid, mid 2020, mid-year 2024 tax bill that amounted to $309.79.
Second?
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, it was nice to meet you.
Before you leave, Mr. Dean, next steps for Mr. Gardner, what can he expect?
You can contact the tax office, we'll make an adjustment to your bill. And we'll, we'll actually reach out to you, just to make it easy.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Please.
Is this meeting available online after the fact?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it's live now.
It's live now, yeah.
You can see it online.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just go to the town's website, and all the meetings are available through the website.
Meetings and agendas? You'll have your agenda, the packet, and then the video.
Yeah, you'll probably be streaming occasionally if you put on public TV. Because we do.
That's what I do.
Yeah, we do stream the meetings, so.
So your video, your video, the video of this meeting will be there as well as the letter and the documentation that you sent to the board?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we get into our discussion items, I have one thing that I would like to Good news. The 26th Annual Alliance for Community Media Northeasters Awards were held in Mystic, Connecticut last week, or two weeks ago, rather, on December 9. The ACM Awards honor outstanding individuals for their contributions to the field of community media. The nominees are considered by the Alliance, by the Alliance for Community Media Awards Committee and are approved by the Board of Directors. This year, Exeter TV submitted two nominations, the first of which was for issues in political process, political programming, and election coverage. And also submitted was the proposed new police station and fire substation, which I'm happy to announce subsequently won first place. The second category submission was for municipal government programming. And Exeter TV submitted the show meeting minutes and won second place in that category. So this evening, we have Gabe Perez, who is here, and I wanted to give you an extra plug at the end here, but I'm going to come up, Gabe, if I may.
Here's the plaque for first place from the ACM NE Northeasters. And this is for first place for the proposed new public safety, proposed new public police station.
Got it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then also, here is the second place certificate for the municipal government programming meeting minutes. Thank you very much. Before you leave, Gabe.
So we all know the tremendous work that Exeter TV does, not only bringing us our meetings, but for the work they do for their biweekly report that they put online. And they do a tremendous job. And Bob Glawacki has been, has been away on some, some personal family leave for good things. And Gabe here has really been instrumental in making sure that our meetings have continued to be taped. And he has continued to do the biweekly report. And every time I've come into this building, Gabe's running around and making sure that things get done. And every time you go out on the street, you see Gabe running around with a camera, making sure that things get done. So I just want to thank you for the work that you've done, particularly this month in Bob's absence. And it is truly, truly, truly appreciated, not only by us, but by the community. So thank you, Gabe.
Thank you, Nico.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right. Would you like to say a few words about your award?
Um, well, is this, is this working?
Yeah, you're the guy. Bring it closer to you, Gabe. Bring it closer to you.
Yeah, I mean, these, these awards, I was the one, I was the representative who went down. So I had a very, very busy, very fun weekend doing this whole ceremony. I think just kind of in relations to the videos that we kind of submitted here. I mean, the police fire substation was, as we know, a very big thing that took a lot of, it wasn't just us. It took a lot of moving heads to really get that working. And I would say that in my time, I've almost been here two years. In my time of being here, that police substation video was one of the most fun two weeks that I had here. Because it was me and Bob running around everywhere. We sat down with all the police guys, we sat down with the fire guys, and just cranked out this video. That, seeing this plaque for it is such a reward, knowing that that effort got, got, you know, it's, it got seen. Secondarily, I want to mention the second place for meeting minutes. Origin of meeting minutes is a little bit of a hot topic for me and Bob. Because the idea of covering meetings is very, you know, that's, that's a Bob kind of category. But when I first came in here, it was, one of the first things I pitched was, we need a way to condense down meetings and make them palatable for everybody. So meeting minutes stemmed from the two of us saying, this is a necessity. And getting us started trying it was, had its ups and downs. But I want to really give, who doesn't work here anymore, I want to give Will Tapley all of the credit for what meetings minute, meeting minute became. Because Will was the one who cracked that code and figured out how to make that show what it is now. I don't like making that show, and since he's gone, I'm very sad about it. So hopefully, he's listening to this. But like, I want Will to know that I appreciate everything he did for that show. And I just want to thank you for acknowledging, with Bob gone, the work that I have been putting into lately. It's been nice. We have new guy Dan in the back right now, who has picked up on everything so fast, and he's very easy to work with. But it definitely is a lot to be, to go from, you know, just the biweekly report guy, meeting guy, to like, I'm communications right now. And it is, I, I love my job, and I'm very happy to be standing here with everybody today. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Gabe.
And before Gabe leaves, just, biweekly report, last Friday, if you want to see Gabe's trip to Mystic, Connecticut, it's one of the segments.
I also played it while you guys were downstairs.
Did you?
Anybody who's watching it online or on TV, I hope you saw it already.
Good, excellent.
Well, you know, Gabe, one last thing, you know, that plaque is rewarding for that two weeks of fun that you did. But I also think that that video reached so many people in this community. And I think that when that station is built, that's, that's another award for the work that you did. So thank you.
Thank you, guys, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. That's a good way to start the meeting.
It absolutely is.
Great way to start the meeting.
Okay, jumping into our discussion items, we've been keeping the revals on the, on the agenda for Mr. Stevens to either give updates or answer questions from folks in the public. So Cory? Good evening.
I will say, just as a follow-up to, to Gabe's topic points, it's nice to see employees comfortable enough with their position to be able to give others, including folks who aren't even here anymore, kudos for the work that they did. It shows a certain level of confidence that we all show in them in the work that they're doing. So congratulations to them and to all of us for fostering that kind of culture here.
Thank you for saying that.
Now I'll bring this all back down to earth. So I guess this would be the, the last of sort of the revaluation updates. The 19th was a tax due day. The office is still busy. I spoke with Donna Bennett this morning, and they're busy sort of cleaning up administratively to sort of move on past the whirlwind of tax day. I took a look back to see what we had collected two days after the due day last year, wondering how this year was going to look. We collected 95% as of basically the due day last year. We're 95% collected this year. So I took that as a good sign.
Thank you for that.
I don't know if anybody has any questions or if anybody's gotten any feedback from, from residents that I can answer questions on.
I don't have any.
We have a couple of items, Mr. Chair, that are tax department-related. They're further down. We might want to just knock them out now, just to get them out of the way.
Please do.
All right. And Mr. Dean will probably be able to help speak to at least one of these. The first of them, there's one memo from Donna Bennett, our deputy tax collector. The first item pertains to prepayments. Folks who, after their December bill or with their December bill, may pay in more than they owed and have a prepayment as of the end of the year. Our historical process has been to turn that money back and not have prepaid at the end of the year. I believe that that's just a preference of the tax collector, of the deputy tax collector at the time. Donna is, has historically, in her work, kept prepaid. It's a balance sheet item. We don't show it as revenue before it really is revenue. But it would be a balance sheet item, and it would just cut down the administration of sending people money, their money back at the end of the year. It would just hold it on the balance sheet as a, as a liability. So she's asking for the authority to do that. There's an RSA 80:52-A that allows the select board to approve that process. So we'd be looking for a motion, or your approval, to keep prepaid at the end of each calendar year. The second item is a little bit more latitude on, for the tax collector, Mr. Dean, on how much interest he can waive. The RSA 76:13 allows us to waive up to $25. And I believe in speaking with Mr. Dean, at one point in our, in our past, this has been practice.
Yes, this is actually a longstanding practice. But I, I came into tonight looking for the board to reconfirm it through this RSA, as opposed to seeing it for the first time. Because it's something I've been doing for 20 years now.
Are there any questions for the finance director on either of these suggestions? Mr. Dean, I'd crafted two separate motions, is that how you'd prefer it?
I, I would prefer it that way, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any questions for Cory? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to authorize property tax prepayments to be held over to the following year pursuant to RSA 80:52-A.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries. And I would entertain a motion to authorize the tax collector to waive up to $25 in interest pursuant to RSA 76:13.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So we can move on now, Mr. Stevens, while you're sitting there, to the FY '25 budget. Before I- Before I ask the board if they have any particular budget items they wanted to discuss, I think there's something you wanted to present.
Sure, and if, in the packet this week is the same budget from two weeks ago, we will update the budget for a number of things that have sort of come in, in the last couple of weeks for your next meeting. They weren't large enough at this point to, to warrant putting a new one in. I do want to come to you with a request. In, in your packet tonight is an analysis of wages for our non-union staff. You'll remember when we came to you a few weeks back to talk about the 27th pay in 2025, and the strategy we were going to employ to, to handle that. We also indicated we were recommending, or we discussed with you and put out some options on what kind of increase to give non-union staff in 2025, and at the time, you settled on a 2% cola. Since that time, we have closed our open enrollment for benefits, and have had other staffing changes that have essentially landed us with a budget to date that is lower by a tenth of a percent than what the BRC handed off when Mr. Kelly was here a couple of weeks I had my staff go back and look at, because I felt, and I think the executive team felt that 2% was a lean number, and we wanted to go, we're not knowing, knowing what the numbers we had at the time, and not knowing what, you know, that enrollment, open enrollment was going to produce the results it did, you know, we went with the 2%, but I had my staff go back and look at what a 3% step would be instead of the 2% cola. The step in our, in our system of compensation allows a person to move from a four to a five, say, within a grade, and that keeps them moving along in their career, and that has implications for retirement particularly. So, we looked at that, we costed it out, and that's what's in front of you tonight for, for each of the three funds, general water and sewer. And essentially, what I did was I looked at the 2024 approved budget, what the BRC handed off, and then the difference of a 2% cola versus a 3% step against the 2024 budget. So, for general fund, if you will, in the, in the far right column, with a 3% step, it's 5.62% increase in $27,000, more than a 2% cola. Realize it's more money, I understand that. I just, just based on, I guess, based on what we're hearing from staff and wanting, and getting a chance to digest what, you know, what the benefits results were, we felt it was worth at least coming back and asking for this additional 1% over the 2%
Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
So, across the three, the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund, it's just a skosh below $30,000 difference.
Yes.
Thanks, I have no problem with that.
I don't have a problem either, and I appreciate the way you laid this out.
Anybody else? No. No, I don't have a problem with this either, and I, I appreciate you coming back to the board, not, not only with feedback from staff, but also with an updated number and explaining, you know, just what this difference will make, and I'm, I'm very happy to, to consider this.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't lost on me when we, when we did the analysis that, you know, this is a hard budget year for, for our residents, present company included. I just think we've worked really hard to keep, to get our staff, to make the town competitive with other towns, to be quite honest, and we don't want to fall behind in that either. It was kind of a heavy lift a couple of years back with our non-unions, to get them to a point where they were, you know, we could say we were competitive with other towns. And this, although it's only incremental, it just keeps us moving in that way.
Mr. Chair, if I could add to that and.
Please.
And say that it is, it is imperative that the town remain competitive in its wage structure, and the executive team had many, many conversations, as you're aware, about how to best implement the '25 budget, given the challenges that we had, so we have come to a group conclusion on this and are presenting it in such a way to you tonight.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, the cost of recruiting, retraining, and that constant motion always surpasses an increase like this, and I think this is a good faith effort to show our employees that we want to retain them, and that's important to me, so.
Thank you.
Do you need a, a motion to?
I don't, I would think that ultimately, your approval of the budget when we get you final numbers would be.
And I agree with that.
Fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you for considering it.
I'm going to make a request, and I don't, and if you can't do it, you can't do it, we're meeting again on January 6th. Is there any way that you can get through the town manager's office, could the, if there are any changes to the budget, other than what we have right now, can we get that a few extra days before we get our packet, so that we can review it? And maybe if you outline what those changes are, it might make it easier for us to be better prepared on January 6th?
Yeah, we'll definitely be working on this budget the week, next week.
Okay.
So, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, great. Before we close the budget, though, I mean, are there any comments or questions, or anything folks want to talk about on the budget at this point?
I have nothing right now, I'll wait till we get the final numbers and things, but thank you.
Okay. You good, Selma and Delante?
I am.
Okay. And down here? All good? Okay. Not at our last meeting, but I think the meeting before, we had the, we had the auditors come in that had audited finance office in the town's financial operation, and part of that was the investment policy. And in our, in our packet, we had some recommendations that they made, our current policy, some things that we could, we could revise to, to be a little stronger, and I think Cory, did you want to sum that up?
Sure. I did have a memo in your, in your packet that sort of lays out what I focused on. I based the revised policy on recommendations from the Government Finance Office Association, which is a national organization in the US and Canada that provides guidance to finance officials such as myself, with the goal of improving public finance, so you can look at their templates and their advice and see how it matches your own policy. And by and large, our policy at its core and its foundation mimics what GFPA recommends. What I was able to do was expand in a number of areas to just elaborate on what we would like to do procedurally, what we need to do each year to make sure we're keeping track of both procedure and controls. So, the, the basic backbone of our current policy is maintained in, in the areas that's most, that are most important, those being which investment vehicles we use, and the requirements around diversification. The reality is, we invest in CDs money we can, for very, very short periods of time. We don't invest in anything that's going to lose us money, or could lose us money, or risk in any way, so that all is maintained here. So, it was a good exercise, and I think we came out with a pretty good policy. Mr. Dean had a chance to look at it, I think he's on board with it as well.
Yes, I am.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Please.
Just on page three of six.
Sure.
Third paragraph down.
All right.
Third, like, sentence down, acceptable to, it says the board, should that say select board?
All right, hold on, so, three of six.
Yeah, and in accordance with RSA.
Yep.
Yeah. So, officials or employees provide such delegation as in writing and includes written procedures acceptable, acceptable to the board. Should that say select board? Since we have a few boards. Not that it would be, and I, and now it's just, it's just, just to add that.
Oh, acceptable to.
To the board. Should it say select board?
I can't see why not.
I'm going to recommend it, that we add that. Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't see that noted anywhere else, because I was going to say, we could either do that, or at the beginning on page one, put board in parentheses, but I didn't find it anywhere.
I looked.
Yeah.
And, and there is another paragraph, a few down, that kind of reiterates it a little bit, but not enough, I just thought it would be better just to add that one more in there.
I agree.
I'll run through and do a word search on board, and we'll just clarify that way.
Perfect. Thank you, Selma and Delante.
You're welcome.
This is a good space, too, Mr. Chair, if I could just take a, a moment and recognize Mr. Stevens and his staff as far as the town's investment income goes. He has, by working within the policy, we, we're well established in the $600,000-plus range for investment income, and that's, for those of you who've been on the board for a long time, you can remember years where it was $50,000, $100,000, and he's really worked hard within, again, within the framework of the policy to make the changes that have allowed us to get to that level of interest income, so many thanks to Cory and, and his staff.
I appreciate that. It's a, you know, it's been one of those years, you know, the market and, and rates the way they are, it works, maybe a silver lining, it doesn't, you know, it's hard for, for, for folks out there with the interest rates where they are, but, you know, if you're looking to invest short-term and, and very secure things, it's, it's the market to do it in.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, I appreciate you saying that, and I think when the auditors were here, too, I mean, just the, the glowing review of, of you and, and the staff, the entire staff, and the operation, it's just, we see it, and, and we don't take it for granted, you know, and what you've done in the couple of years that you've been here, it's been tremendous, so thank you.
Appreciate that, definitely speaks to having a good, good team behind you.
That's it. Any questions or comments down here? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adopt the revised investment policy in the packet as amended for the Town of Exeter effective December 23rd, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think you have one more.
One more. So, the final item I have for you this evening is year-end encumbrances, encumbering budget from 2024 into 2025 for contracts and obligations we have in place before the end of the year. And this year, I don't remember who recommended, but I remembered that someone recommended that we have a historical look at what our encumbrances have been, so down on the bottom left, you can see what our track record has been over the last five years for encumbrances. Right around the million-dollar mark, 2022 was $1.3 million, but other than that, and then 2020 was a half million dollars, but generally around a million dollars of, of encumbrances between the three funds. Most of the items on here are consulting services, whether it be items in the general fund, studies, things that we just haven't had a chance to kick off yet, but we have contracts in place to get done. And the water sewer side, a lot of it is ongoing engineering services, that year after year, we continue to employ our engineers to do work for us, and those are ongoing sort of contracts. And then some of our special warrants from last year, or for the last couple of years as well, that have contracts in place.
Thanks.
There any questions for Mr. Stevens?
No, I appreciate it. The list being provided.
Mr. Dean, procedurally, would you like three motions for each fund? Would you like just one motion on the grand total, or do you want to read each account description?
I, I'd prefer a motion for each fund.
Okay. Do we need to go down the list of account description?
I don't believe you do need to do that.
This is in our supplemental packet?
Correct.
Okay. Any objections from the board?
No.
Okay. Then if not, I would entertain a motion to encumber the total general fund amount of
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I would entertain a motion to encumber the total water fund amount of $49,430.37.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And I would entertain a motion to encumber the total sewer fund amount of $503,621.47.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Great. Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, I think in the absence of, of Mr. Wyndham, you're going to continue the TIF update conversation?
Yes, and also Mr. Sharples is here as well.
Oh, great.
Representing planning and economic development.
Great.
Sure, thanks. RSA 162K requires the town to adopt a TIF development program and financing plan. The town has done that, the original Epping Road TIF District Development Program and Financing Plan was adopted by the town at the March 2015 election, and it's been amended since that time twice. The First Amendment allowed for traffic, the traffic light at Continental Drive in Epping Road to be designed and constructed back in 2018, and the Second Amendment allowed for widening of Epping Road from Continental Drive to Cronin Road to support further development of the corridor, and that was in 2020. The, and currently, staff is working together to prepare another TIF amendment, primarily for Phase Two of the Epping Road Widening Project, and that was something you heard back, about back on December 9th. The estimate in the prior TIF Financing Plan Amendment of 2020 didn't provide enough dollars to complete the widening due to the age of the estimate. Back then, in the plan, the estimate was $1 million. Lialu Council weighed in on that and said we were authorized to spend up to 10% over the amount, that was their opinion, which we have worked with and have done Phase One of the project, spending up to that amount. And so therefore, we'll need a new TIF Financing Plan Amendment, and we'll be seeking the remainder of the funds to finish the road widening project. The amount is estimated to be, at this point, $800,000 to finish the work out there, and TIF funds are available to complete the project, and therefore, there wouldn't be any tax impact to the residents. We do have the, the money on hand to be able to complete the project. As we discussed at the board meeting of December 9th, other projects can be funded with TIF dollars if they are inside the TIF District and identified in the updated TIF District Development Program and Financing Plan. And currently, a project is being considered for paving industrial drive and commerce way that's been estimated at $180,000 currently. And in addition, estimates are being developed for enlarging water and/or sewer lines south of the Continental Drive, Epping, Epping Road traffic light, to support further development within the district. That was something that a recent flow test study revealed, that we may need some upgrades on Epping Road to support some of the development, particularly on Continental Drive that's occurring down there, including a new processing facility that's going in, so we'll be back with more information about that as we evolve the, evolve the plan. The potential of using TIF funds for paying a portion of the debt service on the new police station and fire substation has also been discussed, as that is a public facility within the TIF District, and other improvements in the TIF District are also being considered. So, the expectation we have is that we would have a draft development program and financing plan back to put before the board on January 6th for your review, and, you know, to ask questions and edit it as you see fit, based upon the recommendations that are coming out of, out of staff at that point. A final note, Lialu Council was consulted and opined that TIF money can only be used for projects that are specifically identified in the program, but as long as the expenditure is related to one of the items listed in 162K 63, which is the authorizing legislation for the TIF, then TIF funds can be spent for that purpose. Town meeting cannot vote to authorize the select board to use TIF funds for anything that is not identified in the program, but the program can always be amended to add a new public facility, open space, or environmental control. So therefore, if this board. So therefore, if this Board wished to make changes that fit into that, into that box, you would be able to do that within the, within the TIF funds themselves and be able to allocate those through the development program and the financing plan. The key, the key really is the financing plan and development program. At the end of the day, that that has everything in it that you would want to do in the TIF. So, I don't know, Dave, do you want to add anything to that, or?
I think you've covered it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, we're here to answer questions as well.
I, well, I will add one thing that, you know, we're working with, I'll be working with Darren Winham on the TIF Amendment for the financing plan, and we will be adding the police station, fire substation to that.
Okay. Thoughts and questions?
So, yeah, so if I'm understanding correctly, you're putting language together to put in front of us on January 6th. I have some questions that I would like to ask legal counsel, and I would like to ask them in a non-public session, if that's possible, Mr. Chair. So I don't know if January 6th is doable for me. I'm only one vote on this Board. That seems quick. I have no problem with the 800,000 for the additional funding for the widening. I think we should push forward on that. And I have no problem with the 180,000 for the additional paving and the, you know, making the water pipes uniform. But beyond that, I'd like to talk to legal counsel. So for me, you're rushing. And that's where I am.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I'd have to see. I'm looking for more information for the 6th.
So, Mr. Dean, I mean, you would need to, if you wanted to move forward with this, you're talking about it being on the warrant for our budget hearing January 21st, correct?
Yes, and the, the thing is, any amended financing plan needs to be on the warrant. So any amendment that the Board chooses to make from this list, and this is, again, these are options. These are not hard and fast at this point. They're meant to be talked through and vetted and so forth.
There's a question I'm not going to ask, but, and again, I'm one vote on the Board. But I'm going to second what Mr. Shartrun said. I think we're being rushed. I mean, this was presented to us at our last meeting. Here we are on the 23rd. We meet one more time before the budget hearing, and that's when you're planning on presenting this. I mean, I will ask the question, when, when did the team start working on this?
It was probably four, maybe 45 days ago.
Okay. I'm not comfortable. I, I agree with Mr. Shartrun. There's some questions that I'd probably want to talk with counsel about, and this is too significant. Again, I'm one voice. My voice is saying this is too significant for me to be rushed to make a decision.
Yeah, and this is, I want to emphasize too that this is an idea.
I understand that.
As far as that piece of it goes, it was not anything that necessarily anyone is coming at hard and fast on this or meaning to do that, but it is something that came as a genesis of an idea that was, we were vetting through our E-Team group and talking about.
Yeah, I like the creativity, but I do, I have specific questions I'd like to ask counsel.
Sure.
And I'd like to do that in a public session, not in a public session.
Very good.
Any other thoughts?
No, I think you got, you folks have covered my same. I feel the same.
So let me ask this. If, if, if you're looking for us to move forward with this, is, would counsel be available on January 6th?
I'll have to find out. I'd imagine some resource would be available.
Okay. I want to get a consensus from the Board before you do that. Is January 6th to January 21 enough time to ask our questions and formulate some thoughts and make some decisions?
It depends on what I hear at night.
I think that's fair.
I'm a man.
I think that's very fair. So I think we're kind of in a box, and, you know, I could be, yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not good with that.
Yeah, I just, I want to ask my questions.
Okay, so let's see if we can get counsel. Yes?
Is there a way for Dana to get his questions to counsel so they can come prepared? My concern is if Dana asks a question that they can't quite answer, they need to research it. I don't know what procedure.
Yeah, I don't know. That's a good thought, but I don't know that I want to, I mean, the timing is the timing.
Yeah, we can talk to legal counsel tomorrow. We've had good luck getting them here in the past on relatively short notice, and I think I'd like to take a shot at that. It's okay with the Board?
Yeah, I'd like to speak with them, you know, with the team in the room, the Select Board in the room, yeah, on the 6th.
Flow. The flow of the conversation.
And, and again, if we have to, well, let's, let's start there.
Step at a time.
Yeah, let's start there. Okay.
Can I ask that we also consider the full hour if we can start at 6?
Absolutely.
And no interviews in between or anything?
Yeah.
Please?
That is a request that we will accommodate. I think we need at least an hour.
Yes, thank you.
So that would be 6 o'clock, Mr. Dean?
Yes.
And I understand that there may be a pending interview on the 6th, perhaps. I'd like to.
Move that.
Like to move that.
Will do.
And frankly, move that, given the fact that our next meeting is the budget hearing, I'd like to move that to February.
Okay.
If that's possible. And I'm not sure that was even a confirmed interview, to be honest.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Dave, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
So I just want to be clear. The first two items, full steam ahead for me.
On being presented to the Board?
On the 6th. It's the additional items.
We still have to discuss.
I have questions. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
But drafting language around those, the 800,000 amount and 180,000 amount, I'm very comfortable with that, just to be clear.
Yeah, and I'm with Dan on that too.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Excuse me. And then the, the last discussion item this evening is just to announce the employment agreement that the Select Board and Town Manager have agreed to, which is extending Mr. Dean's employment another year. And I think this is, this will be year 20 for you, Mr. Dean?
Yes, it will be.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't see that often.
Thank you.
For town managers to be in a town that long, so.
Yeah, that is true.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So, anyway, that's just for public to know that we extended Mr. Dean. The contract is matter of public record and it's in our packet, so there are no other comments. I'd like to move on to our regular business, to the clerk, have a few.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to accept a timber tax for map 5, lot 1, in the amount of $3,737.43 for the tax year 2024.
Second?
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Mr. Dean, I'm sorry, but what am I doing with this bond amount?
That is a timber tax bonded amount that is deducted from the amount due. So the amount due would be 1838.24.
Ah, so the number I already gave is wrong.
Birch Road is, wouldn't be the, that's the full amount, including the bond, so.
Okay, so the 3,000 that we just approved is correct. The motion that I made was correct?
Yes, it was. I'm sorry. I apologize to you.
Thank you. I move to approve a veteran's credit for map 95, lot 64, unit 284, the amount of 500 for the tax year 2025.
Second?
It's motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
I move to approve a veteran's credit for map 94, lot 3, in the amount of 500 for the tax year 2025.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
I move to approve a solar exemption for map 75, lot 58, in the amount of 9,000 for the tax year 2025. Okay, map has corrected there. Let me amend my motion to map 72, lot 58.
Second?
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
And I move to approve a solar exemption for map 104, lot 48, the amount of 5,500 for the tax year 2025.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
And I move to approve a tax abatement for map 47, lot 1, unit 2A, the amount of 1,631.78 for the tax year 2024.
Second?
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. That it?
That's it.
Okay, you have my paper. That's what I have. We took care of our permanent approval earlier, so, Mr. Dean, I'll hand it over to you for Town Manager's report.
Okay, we had a meeting on groundwater today. We're continuing to work on that process with Mr. Kelly from the Water Sewer Advisory Committee was there, along with the Public Works Director, myself, Assistant Town Manager Roy, and Finance Director Stevens, and we went through some of the particulars of the steps on the groundwater project, which you'll be hearing more about at a subsequent meeting, but things continue to move along on that. So we're headed toward deliberative session with, with a full calendar of events ready to go. The senior luncheon last Friday was a big success. Parks and Recreation hosted at the Town Hall, and we had over 75 people registered for that. So those senior luncheons are really, really doing great, and we wanted to report that out, that they are being, are such a success, and we're grateful to have all the seniors come out and join us for lunch, and we hope they continue to do that. And the groundbreaking at Ten Hampton Road I was able to attend at 2 o'clock last Friday. That project is well underway now, and I want to thank Mr. Sharples, as many have, as he is serving as the, essentially our owner's rep from the staff perspective overseeing that project and helping us out with it. So thank you to Dave for that, for all the work he's doing on that. The septicage project continues to move along. We're getting parts and installing those, so we should be up and running with that in the next couple of months. That is progress, good progress to report. So we'll begin, we expect by spring, we'll begin accepting septicage again at the septicage facility, which means we will generate revenues to our sewer fund, which is a good thing for the sewer fund. So we'll keep that moving and report back on, on more progress. The survey report on the School Street project is in, so that project continues to move along as well. The grant application for pickpocket is being worked on. I know, Mr. Chair, you have some things to say under your report on that. And the report on Swayze Parkway so far has been generally positive. We're not hearing anything otherwise. We did get a report of one person that did drive on the grass and managed to get out of the parkway, but we haven't figured out exactly how yet. But we're, that apparently did happen. So we just encourage people, if they're down there, to please just pay attention to the road and the, and the turnaround and not, and not drive on the grass. So that, yes, so that happened. The P A Dining Center is now finished, and according to Doug Eastman, looks fantastic. So if anyone has a chance to go over there and take a look at it, you'll see a nice, beautiful new building. The steel is up at 19 Continental Drive. That's a big economic development project with a processing facility that's going in there and continues to progress. The report I got from the Town Planner was the Planning Board meeting at the library went well as far as the room and the amount of people that it was able to hold, so wanted to thank the library for hosting us for that. The revision as far as the solar array, on a quick update on that, the solar array, we're awaiting two final pieces for the array itself. They're supposed to arrive in January. We are hearing Unitil's not ready until the fall of 2025 to finish the project, but we are going to talk to Unitil to see if there's any way we can move that schedule up because we are expecting the parts to come in. We had a meeting last week on the fire police station as far as Net Zero goes. The Assistant Town Manager sat in on that as I was on vacation at the time, but the meeting was held and went well. And then we had our first tax exemption credit advisory committee meeting last week, and that went well. I did attend, and Krista Suter is the chair of the committee. She volunteered to be chair, and Jeannie Wright volunteered to be the vice chair of the committee. So that committee is officially up and running with a lot of data and a lot of, a lot of good feedback already from the different people in the group. And then finally, I just wanted to mention our employee Christmas party last week, which was tremendous, and Senior Executive Assistant Pam McElroy, who pulled it all together and did a great job, and I know everybody had a really good time at the party. So I want to thank the Board for their support for all of that.
Great. I'm glad the holiday party went well. Russ, I did have a question about the, the, the Tax Advisory Committee, because I am really interested in coming. 5:30 is too early for me to regularly attend, and it would be great to not have it then.
Correct, and we'll make that adjustment for you. Yeah, absolutely.
What's the right time?
I mean, anytime after 6:30 is okay. The water and sewer advisory starts at 6:30, which is still early, but it's okay.
Okay.
It's just hard with work and boys and.
Sure.
Schlepping and all that stuff.
Okay, we'll make that adjustment. We'll get something up to the, to the group.
Thank you for making that adjustment, because it's important that you're able to make that.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, can we jump while you've got the floor? Can we jump to correspondence? Because I think you wanted to speak to one of the pieces of correspondence that came in from Beth Dupell?
Yeah, I do. The, Beth and I had a piece of correspondence last week talking about the Christmas parade, and she was very specific in saying the Deutile family of, who have been working very hard to, they're of 21 Blackford Drive, and they have completely re-hauled Santa's float and created Santa's light switch and everything in between for both the lights and the parade volunteers. So this is Doug, Renee, and their adult son Braden have been instrumental over the past seven years. So we wanted to say thank you to them specifically for all they do for us for the Christmas and holiday parade.
Yes, indeed.
That's great. It is such a fun event. I love, I always get, "I saw you at the holiday parade," and the boys always feel really welcome. It's a wonderful town event.
Beth sends all her thanks to, to the town departments that help out.
Great. Yes, and thanks again to Beth. It would not happen without her.
No, it would not happen without her, and tremendously well attended.
Yeah.
Very exciting to see folks out there.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dean.
You're welcome.
Selectwoman Belanger?
So I had a Recreation Advisory Board meeting on December 11th. I'm just going to hit a few high points. There was a groundbreaking, but I'll let Nico cover that because he was there, and I wasn't feeling well, so I couldn't make it. But let's see, Ten Hampton Road updates, that's moving forward. Then the Planet Playground update. We have some really generous donors. I won't name them now because I'm sure we'll hopefully have them here in the near future. And I wanted to thank Don Cludier and Bob Doudre, who have volunteered to repaint the lower court pickleball lines in a tan color to help with those visibility. There's a scholarship giving tree that is in the office area of the Rec Department. Right now, I think it says it's going to be there until December 31st. They're going to push it out till June, I'm sorry, January 6th. And we talked about maybe keeping it all year long and just decorating it for different seasons. And it really does help with the scholarships, helps some people who, otherwise their kids might not be able to attend some of these things. So please keep that in mind and for the next week, two weeks, coming year. And I think that's the scholarship giving tree, and the senior lunches, as Russ pointed out. Keep in mind, if anybody has some time on, what's it, once a month, right, I'm afraid?
Once a month.
Yeah, to volunteer for serving. That would be appreciated. And then I had a Planning Board meeting at the library. Some people were wondering why we were there instead of here, so don't quote me on the numbers, but I think, I counted 68 chairs. There were a few people in the, in the. There were a few people in the hallway, but I think they wanted to be in the hallway versus the 48 capacity here. So, everyone had a seat at this one. So, there were two applicants that were heard that night. River Woods Company at Exeter for 5, White Oak Drive. That's Planning Board Case Number 2416. Lot of public discussion. There's going to be some revised plans coming back. Also, Green and Company, which is 76 Portsmouth Ave, Planning Board Case Number 248. Again, a lot of public discussion, coming back with some more information. Both of those cases are going to be heard again on January 23rd, 2025. Tentatively at the library, but please keep an eye for the agenda when it's posted as to the location of this meeting. Also, there's going to be a public site walk for the 76 Portsmouth Ave applicant, and that's going to be at 8:00 on January 9th. And we're going to be walking from Haven, I said Haven Court or Haven Lane, oh my gosh.
Haven Lane.
Haven Lane.
Lane, thank you, into this property, so anybody who wants to come, please dress appropriately. You're going to need boots and things like that. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you. And I watched that meeting, and it worked. It worked pretty well, at least watching from TV at home. The audio was, for the most part, very good, and it looked like folks were able to participate.
Yeah, there were, there was just a one glitch, and it was because we didn't know whether or not we were going to need the screen. So, if in fact it's there on the 23rd, the room might be set just a little bit different, so that, but, you know, we do the best we can with, with what we have. So, I was glad everyone had a seat, because it was kind of a long night.
It was a long night.
So.
Thank you very much. Selectwoman Gilman.
Yes, I have no committee reports. I would like to say that the senior lunch was really well attended. I've never seen it so full, but that may be because I went early instead of later. Everybody was there, and it's definitely a good Parks and Rec production. It's appreciated every year. They had the sing-along. It had just started when I chose to leave, because, you know, when I hear me sing-along. And then the other thing is with the Community Power Coalition, there's a case that the Public Utilities Commission has sort of directing Unitil to spread more of their standard costs to the energy distribution. And it's not fair to the competitive market for energy suppliers like Z E C N H. So, I have sent a letter as a representative to, you know, please, we do not support this move. And there is a, something really funky with the Public Utilities Commission, which now falls under the Department of Energy. So, we're not really sure who's making this move, but it's coming out of their docket, so, so we'll hear more about that in the end. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you for that.
The next ratings, rating setting is at the end of January, so hopefully that will be clear.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Well, Selectwoman Chartran and I both attended the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, which was at the library, and Gabe helpfully pointed me in the right direction, because I just went on autopilot and showed up here, and he said, "Oh, you're, you're actually over at the library." So, kudos to him for
And yet, you got there before I did.
That's true, and thank you for noting that. It was a very good discussion. I think it's always interesting, you know, when we have competing interests and, and, you know, different applicants there to ask for abatements on different things for different reasons, and everybody sort of feels like, well, my reason is really not my fault. And I think it's going to be interesting to, you know, after this policy has been in place for a little bit, to, you know, sort of do a look back and understand what are we actually being asked to do? Are there proactive ways that we can, you know, see if we can do some outreach and make it, and, and, you know, catch things on the front end, and does that kind of technology make sense for the, for our town? So, nothing out of the ordinary to report. It'll just be an interesting opportunity to take, you know, to take a look at some of how, you know, how we could better be doing this. And then the other thing that I will say is I'm just continually grateful to have the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee to litigate and deal with and understand and spend time patiently talking with folks sort of at some of their lower moments. And it, you know, I think, I don't, I mean, I'd be curious about your assessment after that meeting, but like, who leave the committee feeling at least heard and respected, if not getting what they want.
Yeah. My reaction was, first of all, I did not realize that the policy had shifted while I was off the Select Board. It used to be when I was on from 2012 to 2018. It was a hard no. That policy shifted because of the pandemic and the hardship that created. Makes total sense to me. And my understanding of the policy, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you now get one abatement every 10-year period, and typically somewhere around half to full abatement of whatever the problem was. Is that about right?
That's about right, and if it was not negligence.
Right.
So, you know, if you're going into a cycle of, you know, well, we ignored it, and you were told multiple times, then it's like, well.
Yeah, that's on you.
I don't know what to say.
So, I had a learning curve, and that was good. I always like a, a good, steep learning curve. But it was a great meeting, and the members of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee were, you know, very knowledgeable, and, and at the same time empathetic to the applicants, and I thought it, I thought it was a great process.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. And I appreciate folks being able to be heard.
I think that's usually what it is. People just want to be heard.
It's important.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, my report is that I attended the, in addition to that Water and Sewer Advisory on 12/11, I attended the dam removal meeting on December 10th, which was a Tuesday?
Yes.
At 6:00 PM at the library. Seems like we're doing some meetings at the library. That's, that's kind of nice, the library to host us. Again, it was because of capacity, and that room was just able to fit all the folks that were interested. I want to give a shout out to Paul Vlosic, who kind of organized the meeting and spoke at it, and also our consultants, who are working on the dam removal process with us. And I also want to give a shout out to a gentleman whose name I did not catch, who was there from the D E S's Dam Bureau, who, at a very critical moment during the meeting, was able to provide some insight in terms of how the Dam Bureau thinks about, you know, these, these processes for either removing or repairing dams. So, very appreciative that he was there, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name. So, that's what happened that night, and, and then I also, the night of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, there was a Conservation Commission meeting that I was not able to attend, but Kristen Murphy sent me a quick summary of the meeting, so I'm going to rip through that real quick.
Please.
Keith Whitehouse shared about the Pearpoint Park opportunity to comment and give feedback on potential designs for Pearpoint Park. The Rider Conservation easement, which is an easement to be held by S E L T, S E L T, there was a vote by the Conservation Commission to support the easement language as presented. There was a letter of support for Pickpocket Dam Grant applications. There was a reminder of the Winter Solstice Celebration that took place at Rain's Farm on 12/21. I hope that was successful. And then there's a reminder that in the new year, there'll be a kickoff of the hike challenge, where people can hike five different trails, and upon completion, receive a custom sticker from the town. Very cool, yeah.
That is so.
Stickers and hiking is a thing, folks. And then finally, Kristen informed me there was a potential wetland violation reported by Citizen Brian Grissette in his email, and there will be follow-up with the railroad to discuss that letter. And I think that's it.
Great, thank you.
One more thing. When I was talking about energy, I need to do the public service announcement about the Opt Up Challenge that we're in. We're still lagging behind Dover. So, what I'm, I'm asking everyone is to look at your, your rates on your energy supply, on your, on your Unitil bill for your electricity supply, and take a look at the other options we have for the cost of energy that services your home or, or business. And, and opting up means that you will be getting a supply of energy that is produced by more green sources than the default supply that we are typically, everybody's just put on default. So, we're looking, we've been challenged to opt up for greener potential, and so I'm just asking residents and businesses to take a look at the choices we have on the Energy Committee's website. And this past set of rates, the second choice are 50, I think it was 50% green energy supply was only, was still lower than what Unitil was going to give us if we had stayed with them.
Great, thank you. Excuse me. Swayze Park Trustees did not meet in December. Took the month off, but I do want to take a moment and thank DPW Director Steve Cronin and his staff for delaying the opening by several days due to inclement weather, and I thought that was a wise decision on his part, but more importantly, I just want to give the Department credit for getting that message out to folks, both on social media and also on the town website. So, I want to recognize that. River Advisory Committee met last Thursday, and Paul Vlosic kind of gave us a presentation on the presentation on December 10th, so for those that were unable to attend, I believe the presentation is in the packet. It's on our website. If you watch the video of the meeting, he runs through a really good summary, a very descriptive summary. He also went over the three possible grants that we will be applying for, the town will be applying for, for Pickpocket. And he advised that the committee probably doesn't have to meet until April, once the warrant article has been reviewed and voted on by voters. Pearpoint Park Committee also met last Thursday, and Mr. Stevens volunteered his time to talk about how the town policy is and procedure for accepting donations, and I want to thank you, because I thought that was a great presentation, and, and I think the committee knows where to, where to move from that. Amanda Kelly, who's on the committee, also gave a presentation on some of the survey results so far, on what folks in town want to see. They have over 500 responses so far, and they're very interesting. There, there are a lot of different ideas. Some, I think, are worth looking into further. Some were outside the box and, and interesting, and all of them were good, but it's a very small piece of land. So, I think this committee is excited to move forward and see how they can best represent the community's interest. I went to Ten Hampton Road on Friday for the groundbreaking. Selectwoman Gilman accompanied me.
Cold.
It was incredibly cold, and, but it was nice to move forward on that and give some recognition to folks that have, that made this happen. So, that was a, that was a great event.
Did they actually give you a sledgehammer?
They, they did, but they wouldn't let me hit the wall, because the room was too small. We had too many people there, so we went outside and posed for a picture. Mr. Dean has the shovel for the groundbreaking, and I'm there holding the sledgehammer that I was unable to use, so.
Okay.
I was, I was let down by that, but certainly not let down by the project and the attendance on Friday. Thank you, Mr. Dean, for the invitation for the Select Board to attend the holiday party for staff. Again, Selectwoman Gilman and I were able to attend that, and it was nice to be able to spend some time with staff.
And I got this close to getting a whole lot of lottery tickets.
In a Yankee swap. But as Mr. Dean allowed me a moment to, to talk to the staff, I'd like to just say again how appreciative we are of the staff and what they do for the community day in and day out. So, it was nice to be able to spend an hour or two with them before the holiday. I did have one other thing I wanted to bring up, and I don't remember what it was. So, I will move forward to correspondence. There's an email from a resident that wanted to talk about the winter parking ban, and I have corresponded with Mr. Richards, and kind of gave him a quick history of a citizen's petition from several years ago, and indicated that the Board could consider this, or at least discuss it, once we get into 2025. So, I look forward to ongoing discussion with Mr. Richards. Mr. Chartran?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You reminded me that we took this up after a citizen's petition back in the teens.
Yes.
And that Selectwoman Gilman and I pushed for what the citizens voted for, but ultimately, the Select Board chose not to move forward at that time. I am still of a similar mind on this. I, I think Mr. Richards has some very good arguments in here, and obviously, I want this coordinated with our public safety departments and our highway department. But there's a lot of good points in this letter, and I would like to see the Board work over the next year to get something on the warrant in 2026.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
And I'd like to read, you know, I think if my memory serves me correctly, Mr. Dean, I was not on the Board. I happened to be at the meeting as a citizen, and it was a very robust conversation, and I think that the majority of the Board that voted to not find the petition binding, or I forget what the exact wording of the motion was, but it was based upon the Fire Chief, Police Chief, and Public Works Director bringing up issues of public safety, and I think that's what they, they hung the motion on.
True.
And that's, and that, and I, you know, I respect a, you know, a vote. However, the citizen's petition did pass overwhelmingly, if my memory serves correctly, and we now have a new Public Works Director, a new Fire Chief, and a new Police Chief. And so, I'm wondering, again, as Mr. Chartran noted, if we could bring them in for a discussion sometime in 2025 and see what their perspective is from public safety, and it was about seven or eight years ago. So, I think it's worth revisiting that conversation.
Sounds good. We'll, we'll make sure that's part of the schedule.
Okay, great.
And I appreciate Mr. Richards writing his letter.
Indeed.
So well.
We have a piece of correspondence from the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, Division of Forests and Lands, and Mr. Dean, this looks like it's an approval of a timber sale.
Yes.
That was administered. And lastly, a flyer from the SAU 16 Community, asking folks to use their voice. There is a survey that they have online, and there's a QR code. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
I don't know if, there's, there's no link here, Mr. Dean. Do you know any more about how folks could, oh. Now, it looks like the QR code.
It's in March.
It's a website link as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And their planning sessions in March.
Planning sessions in March, so, okay.
And food and child care will be provided.
This is for strategic planning.
For their strategic plan, right? The SAU 16 Strategic Plan.
Yep. Okay, reviewing the Board calendar. We'll meet again in January, January 6th. Our budget hearing is January 21st, and then the Board will meet February 3rd, February 18th, which is a Tuesday due to a holiday, and then March 3rd. And I can repeat that if the Board wants.
Is the 21st a Tuesday as well? No.
Yes, because of the, that's the budget hearing, the 3rd, Tuesday in January.
Okay.
By statute. So, 1-6, 1-21, 2-3, 2-18, and 3-3. Other dates to note, February 1st will be the deliberative session at 9:00 AM at Exeter High School, and the town election will be held March 11th at the Tuck Auditorium. So, with that, I would ask if there are any other business to come before the Board this evening?
I have a question.
Please.
Is the week of January 6th the Christmas tree pickup week?
I'll have to get back to you on that one.
I think it is. It's usually
It's a good bet it is.
the 12th day of Christmas, so.
And can we post that? We usual
It already is posted. I just don't remember.
Okay.
Well, it's on the DPW website. I just don't remember.
Okay. All right. Any other business? That's why I was asking.
You good, Joe?
Did you have any business before the Board? No? Okay, okay. So, again, I want to wish our employees, our community, certainly No? Okay. Okay. So, again, I want to wish our employees, our community, certainly colleagues on the board, enjoying the happiest and merriest of continuing holiday season, and a, hopefully for all, a very happy and healthy and peaceful 2025.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
You're here.
Happy holidays. Merry Christmas, everybody.
So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.